I'm just going to read a statement real quick before the meeting's called to order. Pursuant to Executive Order 9-29-20, executed by the Governor of California on March 17, 2020, and as a response to mitigating the spread of coronavirus known as COVID-19, the regular meeting of the Planning Commission scheduled for Tuesday, February 9, 2021, at 6:00 PM will allow members of the public to participate and address the commission during the open session of the meeting via teleconference only. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Okay, it is 6:00 PM. I'd like to call to the order of our regular Planning Commission, excuse me, City of Paramount Planning Commission, February 9, 2021. And let's see here, can I get a pledge of allegiance from Mr. Bautista?
Sure, this is Commissioner Bautista. We're going to go ahead and start the pledge of allegiance. Everybody ready? We're going to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, by liberty and justice, for all.
Before we call, roll call with the members, can I ask for an excuse for Ernie Asparza, Commissioner Ernie Asparza? He's not feeling well, so can we excuse him for today's meeting?
This is Weisenberger. I move that we excuse Ernie Asparza from today's next meeting.
This is Commissioner Gutierrez. I'll second that. Thank you. Can I get a roll call first?
Commissioner Bautista?
Present.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Present.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Chair Abrego?
Yes, here. Okay, approval of the minutes for January 13, 2021. Can I get a motion or can I get someone to approve the minutes?
This is Commissioner Bautista. I make a motion to approve the minute.
Thank you. Commissioner Gutierrez, I'll go ahead and second that. Thank you. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Bautista?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Chair Abrego?
Yes. Next item is public comments.
No public comments.
Okay, we move on to new business. Conditional use permit number 901, a request from ES, excuse me, Opco USA LLC, DBA Versary, to operate a warehouse distribution business of pest control materials and equipment at 7713 Somerset Boulevard.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. As you stated, this is a request to operate a warehouse distribution business of pest control materials and equipment. And this is in a large industrial park on the north side of Somerset Boulevard at 7713 Somerset Boulevard. And Ivan Reyes, our associate planner, will give you the details.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Chair Abrego and members of the commission, I'm here to present conditional use permit number 901. This is S. Opco USA LLC doing business as DBA Versary. This is a request to operate a warehouse/distribution business of pest control materials and equipment. The property address is 7713 Somerset Boulevard. It is located in the M2 Heavy Manufacturing zoning district. The site is 8.59 acres and the suite is 5,174 square feet. They are proposing to have six employees. Their hours of operation are from 7:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday to Friday. They are closed on the weekends. The applicant's still debating on which type of van or truck they will have on site. They're proposing a 16-foot or 24-foot straight van or Sprinter van. Here's an example of what those look like. On the left-hand side is the Sprinter van. On the right-hand side is what your typical box truck looks like, 16 or 24-foot van. They're proposing to have up to 15 outgoing shipments per day. This is a combination of customers and small carriers such as FedEx or USPS. Here's an aerial view of the site. Oops, one second. The project location is 7713 Somerset Boulevard. The nearest cross street is Garfield Avenue. As you can see, the red lines indicate the property lines for the tenant space, which is located in the Somerset Business Center. Here's a close-up of the site plan. As you can see, the floor plan, there are compromises of office and several office spaces and a truck well, as indicated in the red lines. That's the tenant space that they will be occupying. They also have a mezzanine that they would utilize for storage, which has access in the same footprint of the tenant The parking locations is indicated in yellow for this tenant space. Here's a view of the Somerset Business Center looking north. And here's a view of the exterior of the tenant space. And with that, the recommendation is to adopt Resolution Number PC 21002 for conditional use permit number 901. This concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so do we have anyone that's opposed or...?
No, nobody wishing to speak in favor or opposed. Commissioner Abrego, our Chair Abrego, I do have a statement from the property owner's representative that I would like to read.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Honorable Chairman and Commissioners, these comments on the proposed conditional use permit are submitted on behalf of both the owner of the property, Somerset Business Partners LP, and the proposed occupant of the premises, ES OPCO USA LLC, doing business as Versaris. We much appreciate the very prompt and considerable effort of the city staff on this matter and are grateful for the recommendation of the proposed CUP. We respectfully request that the commission consider amending two of the proposed conditions. Proposed Condition 24 currently states trucks delivering vehicles to the site shall unload within the property interior. Truck parking, stopping, loading, and unloading are prohibited on public streets and alleys. The requested language is that all work with the exception of active loading and unloading shall be conducted indoors. Regarding that request, that condition regarding trucks delivering vehicles, that is from a previous conditional use permit. The intent of that condition is only that loading and unloading be done on-site, not on the street or public right-of-way. So, we would just recommend that the condition read that all loading and unloading shall take place on-site. The applicant would also like to address Condition 30, that trucks are prohibited from overnight storage on the property. He's requesting that that condition be deleted, and we would recommend that the condition read that one truck is allowed to park overnight within the truck well. Thank you.
Thank you, John. What was the number again for all loading?
The first one is Condition 24, and then Condition 30.
Got it. Got the second one. All right. All right, so can I get a motion to close this public hearing?
This is Weisenberger. Still moved?
This is Commissioner Bautista. Second that. Commissioner Bautista will second that.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner. Can I get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Bautista?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Chair Abrego?
Yes.
Okay, motion to adopt the Planning Commission Resolution Number PC 21002, and also making sure, having the changes done on the CUP with number 24, that all unloading and loading will be done within the premises. And Item Number 30, one delivery truck will be allowed to stay within the docking area overnight. So can I get approval for this request?
This is Weisenberger.
Okay, go ahead.
This is Weisenberger. I make a motion to approve...
I'm sorry, could we hold for just a second?
Sure, John.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner Chair Abrego. The city attorney would like to add a condition that states that any violation of these conditions, the conditional use permit shall be subject to revocation.
Okay. All right, so any, all these conditions under the conditional use permit will be followed, and if not, if they are violated, they're subject to condition, I guess, for violation. And this is for conditional use, excuse me, let me go back, I'm sorry. This is for Resolution Number PC 21002, for the approving request by Opco USA LLC. Can I get a motion to accept this resolution?
This is Commissioner Weisenberger. I make a motion to approve this conditional use permit number 901 with those three amendments, number 24, number 30, and I guess we'll add Condition Number 32, that these conditions cannot be violated.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
This is Commissioner Gutierrez. I'll go ahead and second that. Thank you, Gutierrez. Can I get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Bautista?
No.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Chair Abrego?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is reports, item number three, oral report, housing element, environmental justice element outreach.
Yes, Commissioner Chair Abrego and Commissioners, John King's going to give you an update on our progress with the housing element update and the environmental justice element. John?
Thank you, John. Thank you, John Carver, and Chair Abrego and Commissioners. So as you're aware, we've embarked on our update of the housing element, which happens every eight years. And we have a new element called Environmental Justice Element, and these are elements of the general plan, of the Paramount General Plan. And we're doing this under state law. So this is just a summary of outreach. So eight years, and it's under the review of HCD, the California Department of Housing and Community Development. The adoption deadline for the housing element is October of this year, and that's pretty much by statute. That's a definite deadline. And kind of background, I have a little quote on the slide here. "The availability of housing is of vital statewide importance, and local and state governments have a responsibility to facilitate the improvement and development of housing to make adequate provision for the housing needs of all economic segments of the community." And so that's what we're doing. And just a brief summary here, where we are, the whole process began kind of late September, early October. We had some very targeted focus groups in late last year. Those are kind of like smaller invite, by invitation, focus groups. So we got some very tailored feedback from across section of the Paramount community. Then we had some workshops, some well-attended workshops last week. We had one on Monday, which was in English, and we had one on Wednesday, which was in Spanish. Normally, we would like to have, you know, in a normal year, in-person community workshops, and you'd have some translation on the spot. So without that, we just did the next best thing, and so that was to, unfortunately, you know, just the world we're in, so we had English and Spanish separate. And then we have a survey. Now, a survey is up and ready, and it's online, and it will soon be widely promoted. And we have a webpage on the city website for this whole housing element effort. And the website is here, is before you, paramountcity.com/community/planningdepartment/housingelement. Within there, you'll find a link to the survey. And we're going to get that link promoted through social media and the website and the mayor's weekly message. Then we're going to have some more community outreach, some participation in the late spring and early summer, as we get this more refined. And this is based on, well, as part of the housing element, we have to plan for housing, and the state has a big number for the whole state, and then it goes down to region. And we're in what's called the SCAG region, the Southern California Association of Governments region, Southern California. And so HCD determines that in this region, they have to come up with over a million housing units to plan for in the next eight years. And that's broken down by jurisdiction. They have a lot of different types of formulas based on area, population, and need. And for Paramount, preliminarily, our number is 362 housing units to plan for for the next eight years. That's preliminary because there were some appeals that wrapped up last week. There were 50 jurisdictions that appealed locally, and two were awarded their appeals. They were successful. One was Pico Rivera, the other was Riverside County. And because they were successful, the number of units that they were allowed to have reduced, that gets spread out throughout the region. So our 362 numbers should go up slightly, maybe three or four, accounted three or four more. So the regional housing needs assessment, that's this whole process, and also known as RENA. You'll hear that term, RENA. So the draft RENA by income group, so not only do we have this draft number of 362, it's down to income level. So market rate housing, you know, you just sell it to, you know, whatever the market bears, is above moderate income housing. And you can see, the number that we're looking at is 180 out of those 362 to be market rate. And then the other three categories, very low income, low-income households, and moderate-income households, so it's about the other half. And you can see at the bottom, there's a note that says, "Goals for accommodating new housing need through comprehensive land use policies and planning." It's not a construction obligation. The state does not require cities to get in the construction business, but cities have to have to plan for these areas, for this number. So that's housing. Second part is environmental justice. It's a new element of the general plan, and this comes down from a Senate bill, SB 1000, from 2016, and it requires jurisdictions with disadvantaged communities to incorporate environmental justice policies into their general plans. What's a disadvantaged community? So that's a term, it's, there's a whole, again, it's formula-based, and it comes down to a mapping tool developed by the California Office of Environmental Health Hazard Assessment, OIAHA, and it's called CalEnviroScreen. So they throw in a bunch of, they throw in a number of indicators, and based on a numbering system, you get an N number, and by census tract, that determines the disadvantaged communities. That's really the short version. Well, here's a map of Paramount. Then you'll see a map of getting into Paramount itself, and there's different colors based on the scale of disadvantaged communities. And just happens, so happens that almost all of Paramount's census tracts are considered disadvantaged community by this formula. The one exception is up in the northeast portion of the city, where, what's there, like Super A Market, and, you know, up there, Downey and Gardendale. And it's really, you know, it's not the most exciting thing to be considered a disadvantaged community, but do keep in mind that the next slide shows how the context of the region. And if you look at the map, the red areas are the areas that are considered disadvantaged community, in the dark orange. A lot of this follows the trail of the freeways. So you'll see the 710 freeway, you'll see the 105 freeway. These are corridors, so, you know, those freeways carry a lot of trucks and car traffic, and the diesel, and the particulates that come from vehicles. So, you know, we're all kind of a part of that, and it's just where we're situated. And, you know, and how, we're not by the coast, so you don't get as much wind to blow it away. Okay, then the timeline, the next slide is the housing element and environmental justice update timeline. So right now, we're working on workshops and survey. The next step coming up is more on the technical side, kind of behind the scenes, is to identify housing sites. And we are getting feedback from the Paramount community on, well, what do you think? What would be a good housing site for, to get to that number, that 362, and a couple more. We'll put together draft element, send it up to the state, and adopt it by October. The next slide shows the survey. This is what the survey, how the survey begins, and, you know, you keep clicking next and answer the questions. Again, you can get to that from the housing element webpage on the city website. It's bilingual. And that's it. So just giving you an update, and you're going to hear a lot more of this, and in the end, you'll be reviewing the update to the elements. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Any questions from our commissioners?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Gutierrez. I do have one question. Is there anything that the city is doing to encourage the construction? Because I know, obviously, there's no construction, like, number or mandate that has to be done, but is there anything that the city is doing to move that up?
Yes, we're doing quite a bit. We have a whole program of encouraging housing. So we meet with developers. We don't charge for consultations with homeowners and developers to build. Most cities have, they charge kind of by an hourly rate just to talk to a planner. We don't do that. So we sit down with them, and we walk them through this whole process in a friendly way. We have bilingual staff. ADUs, so accessory dwelling units, those are the back housing units. We comply with state law, and we don't discourage them. Last year, in 2020, we permitted, I believe, 15 of them. 15 were permitted. Three were actually finished within the same year. The remaining are either getting started or they're in construction. So that's one way. One big way is to have a smaller, you know, a garage conversion, or a smaller little house in the back, which doesn't impact as much as, say, a tower. So that's another way. And we actually applied for, we submitted a grant application. Planning intern Erica Barbero here, she was instrumental in getting an application into SCAG, which will hopefully will get some money to help out with some workshops and some public outreach to explain that process a little better. And soon, City Attorney John Kavanaugh will help us out with, will have our own local ordinance, which will make the process more community-based. So those are just a few things, just off the top of my head. But yes, it's, we are doing our best to encourage a number of different types of housing.
And John, I'm trying to figure out the correlation here between the income levels, because I know they keep talking about the income levels and the housing availability. So is there any, like, government subsidies on certain construction development that's going towards certain low-income individuals, or how is the income level correlated with the project?
Well, that is a good point. So we have been permitting and following through in the process of housing construction. In the last eight years, almost all of that has been market rate housing, so that higher category. We have to do a better job at affordable housing. We did a better job when we had redevelopment funds. We have a lot of, you wouldn't even know it, they're just kind of sprinkled about throughout different developments. We do have one, you know, with the senior project, housing project that you reviewed and recommended approval for a few months ago, that includes some affordable units. But it is hard. So part of our, in this process, we're going to come up with some other, kind of a menu of options, to either get some grants from the state, to look at those ADUs a little more closely, and we could count some of those toward affordable units, and to do some other things. Plan Director John Carver has a presentation soon to the city council about a concept called inclusionary housing. That's another way. And City Attorney John Kavanaugh is working on density bonus. Those are some other, we'll get into those a lot more in-depth in coming months. But those are some tools that we will use to, with city council approval, of course, to get more affordable units and meet our obligation.
Thank you, John. Any other questions? Yeah, thanks for your feedback, John. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Yeah, this is Weisenberger. I've got a question, John. These ADUs that you were speaking of, these conversions and back houses and senior living facility, do those type of things count against this 362 number that Paramount has been allotted?
Yes, they do. Yes, they are, although they may be considered kind of, well, the word is in there, accessory or mini kind of a home, the state does count those toward housing units. We do a report, we send to the state every April of each year, and that report will contain those, will include those as full housing units.
Now, this 362 number, you say that was assigned to us based on a formula?
Yes, and actually, I mean, it sounds like a lot, but when we compare it to some of our neighboring cities, Southgate, Lakewood, Downey, they all have, well, I shouldn't say all, but there are thousands. I think Southgate has a number of over 3,000. It's a very complicated process, and we're a little surprised at the preliminary number, but fact is, we're on the lower scale compared to other cities.
Okay, so even though they have probably a complicated formula, if some of these appeals that you mentioned, if they go through, then the formula is kind of amended, I guess, and it's just added to. Is that right? It's kind of spread among the other cities? Is that the way it works?
That's true. So two were successful, Riverside County and Pico Rivera. Pico Rivera was assigned a number, a preliminary number of 3,800. They were requesting to get it down to 800, which is a difference of, you know, 3,000, well, 3, yeah, about 3,000. So if, actually, what I don't, what I don't know, I wasn't able to look it up, if they were successful for that full amount or a partial amount. And so you take that 3,000 number, and you distribute, I guess by population across all the jurisdictions. So, you know, LA County has 88 cities and the different populations. Just a rough estimate, that would make us go up one or two. Riverside County... Riverside County, that, I couldn't even find the number, what they were requesting, but that's, you can imagine, that's, that could potentially be a, a large number to be redistributed amongst all the other, other jurisdictions.
Okay. That's interesting stuff. Thank you, John.
No problem. Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, John.
John, this is Commissioner Bautista.
Yes, sir.
I have, I do have a question. Just briefly, if you can just explain what is our current bidding process for construction companies? Can any company come in into the city and place a bidding process? Or do we tend to work with, you know, with companies that we're used to? Or can a new company come in and bid?
Well, for housing, we don't, I can't remember any, at least in recent years, we don't, we're not in charge of, of the construction of housing. Basically, our job is to, is to plan for it, to have the zoning, zone the areas to have new housing. So really, it's, it's up to the, the developers themselves, private developers and homeowners to, to contract as they see fit with their, their construction companies.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, guys. Thank you. Thanks, John. The next item, item number four, oral reports, city council action.
Uh, yes, Commissioner Chair Abrego and Commissioners. At the council meeting last week, we gave a presentation on development update from the planning department. And John King will be going through that presentation with you during the economic development board meeting. And that's it.
Okay. Uh, the next item on the agenda, comments, city attorneys?
No comments, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, John. Comments from our commissioners?
No comments.
Any comments from our staff?
Uh, no, sir.
Planning Commission, City of Paramount is adjourned at 6:32 PM. Next meeting is scheduled for March 9th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Thank you. Okay, since Ernie's absent, I'm going to go ahead and call to order the Paramount Development Review Board. Today is February 9th, 2021. Can we do a roll call, members?
Board Member Abrego?
Here.
Board Member Bautista?
Here.
Board Member Wiesenberger?
Here.
Board Vice Chair Gutierrez?
Present.
We'll move on to item number one, which is approval of minutes. If I can get a motion to approve the minutes from January 13th, 2021. This is Board Member Abrego. I approve, I make a motion to approve the minutes for January 13th, 2021.
This is Commissioner Bautista, second motion.
Can we get a roll call?
Board Member Abrego?
Yeah.
Board Member Bautista?
Yes.
Board Member Wiesenberger?
Yes.
Board Vice Chair Gutierrez?
Yes.
We can move on to item number two, new business, a request by Needer Fajari, Magnum Property LLC, for a one-year extension to construct a two-story rear housing unit with two attached car garages at 7254 Mott Street in the R2 zone.
Uh, yes, Vice Chair Gutierrez and Board Members. This item is a request to extend Development Review Application Number 20001. And this was originally approved by the Development Review Board on February 11th, 2020. And as you can see, it's coming up to the one-year expiration date. And the project is a request to construct a two-story unit at 7254 Mott Street. And Planning Intern Erica Barbero will go over the item with you.
Thank you, John. Good evening, Vice Chair and Board Members. Today I do present DRA 20001 by Magnum Property LLC. So the request is for a one-year extension for the project approved last year in 2020. The project location is at 7254 Mott Street in the R2 zone. The proposed project will be a two-story housing unit with two attached garages. The, the property owners were unable to move forward with the project due to issues with another property they own here in the city of Paramount. So therefore, they are here today asking for more time. The property in question is 8,100 square feet, and it currently has an existing single-family home and garage. Here you see an aerial view of the property. The property in question is located in the yellow box, and the closest cross streets are Motts and Garfield. Here's an image of the front of the home. And in this slide, there are site plans and architectural renderings of, of the proposed project. As you can see, the land, the owners plan to do land, new landscape, expand, expand their existing driveway to allow for more space for the, the vehicles to go into the new garages, provide two guest parking spaces, and the new structures are in the yellow. With that, we recommend approval for DRA 20001. Thank you. Oh, and the applicants are on standby in the event that you all have questions for them.
Okay, thank you. Can we get a motion to approve DRA Number 20001 extension by Needer Fajari?
This is Commissioner Bautista. I'll make a motion to add the extension.
Board Member Abrego? Oh, go ahead, Wiesenberger.
Seconded by Wiesenberger.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Board Member Abrego?
Yeah.
Board Member Bautista?
Yes.
Board Member Wiesenberger?
Yes.
Board Vice Chair Gutierrez?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to item number three, a request by Jose Felix slash Lightning Construction for Sylvia Gonzalez and Paulino Rivera to construct a 1,826 square foot detached rear unit with a 476 square foot attached garage at 15942 Orozaba Avenue in the R2 zone.
Uh, yes, Vice Chair Gutierrez and Board Members. You may have noticed, this is the second of a third item on the Development Review Board agenda, that is a request to construct second units. This one is at 15942 Orozaba Avenue. And our Planning Intern Christian Santana will give you the presentation.
Thank you, John. Good evening, Commissioners. Tonight I will bring you an application request by Jose Felix of Lightning Construction for Sylvia Gonzalez and Paulino Rivera to construct a 800, 1,826 square foot detached rear unit with an attached 476 square foot garage at 15942 Orozaba Avenue in the R2 medium density residential zone. The subject 7,500 square foot property is on the east side of Orozaba Avenue. This Development Review Application is being processed in conjunction with an administrative action number 2046, which is a ministerial over the counter approval of an accessory dwelling unit to comply with state law. As you can see here, this is the aerial view of the property. The property is outlined in red on the eastern side of Orozaba Avenue. The proposed two-story house will total 1,826 square feet of habitable space, and the garage will be 476 square feet. The 616 square foot first floor will be, will comprise of a living room, kitchen, half bathroom, and laundry room. The applicant proposes three bedrooms, one bathroom, and one master bedroom with a bathroom and walk-in closet on the second floor, which is 1,210 square feet. And here you can see a site plan. The property is outlined in blue. And here's a floor plan. Here's an elevate, a view from the elevation side. The applicant proposes a number of architectural elements to meet city design standards. A decorative Spanish-style roofing, a smooth stucco finish on both home and garage, the aluminum sectional roll-up garage door, a four-inch decorative white foam trim on all windows. The applicant proposes to reduce the front yard fencing to 42 inches, as well as a 24-inch box tree will be planted along the parkway on Orozaba Avenue by, at the direction of the Public Works Department. The applicant will also plant a 36-inch foot box tree in the front yard. And here's a view of the property looking east. Here's a view looking west. And with that in conclusion, staff recommends approval of Development Review Application Number 21-001. Thank you.
Any questions from any of the board members? No. Okay. Can we get a, a motion to approve DRA Number 21001, a request by Jose Felix? This is Board Member Abrego. I make a motion, we approve the DRA Number 21-001.
Second, Wiesenberger.
Uh, can we get a roll call, please?
Board Member Abrego?
Yeah.
Board Member Bautista?
Yes.
Board Member Wiesenberger?
Yes.
Board Vice Chair Gutierrez?
Yes.
Okay, we want to, item number four, a request by Saraj, oh, I'm going to murder this second name, Abolsun, to construct a 2,017 square foot attached rear unit with a 16 square foot front porch, 425 square foot attached two-car garage, and a 425 square foot detached two-car garage at 8407 Somerset Boulevard in the RM zone.
Yeah, uh, yes. Board, Board Vice Chair Gutierrez and Board Members, this property is on a stretch of Somerset Boulevard on the north side of the street, east of Indiana. And this is a, a stretch of property that the Planning Commission approved a, a zone change at several months ago. And that was from commercial manufacturing to multiple family residential. And then the city council subsequently approved that zone change. So this is our first project in that, in that stretch of Somerset Boulevard under the new RM zoning. And it's for a second unit. And Ivan Reyes will give you the details.
Thank you, John. Good evening, Board Vice Chair Gutierrez and Board Members. I'm here to present Development Review Application Number 21002. This is a request to construct a 2,017 square foot attached rear unit with a 16-foot square front porch and a attached 425 square foot two-car garage. The property address is 8407 Somerset Boulevard. It is located in the RM Multiple Family Residential Zoning District, and it is on a 9,200 square foot interior lot. Currently, there is a 625 square foot single-family residence. With that, they are also requesting to construct a 425 square foot detached two-car garage. Also, they're proposing to have two guest parking spaces as part of, to meet the parking requirements. Two ADUs are ministerially being reviewed, but for this, they're only intended for reference only. Here's an aerial, aerial view of the site. The project site is located at 8407 Somerset Boulevard, just north of Somerset with the cross street of Indiana Avenue. Here's the proposed site plan. So the new construction will occur to the rear of the lot, just north of, of the existing residential. So that will be the 425 square foot two-car garage with the attached 2,017 square foot second unit. Just north of that is the two-space guest parking. And further up is the 425 square foot garage. Here's a close-up of the proposed floor plan. As you can see, on your left-hand side is the first floor area, which is the, the garage, proposed office with storage space, a living room, and one bedroom with a half bath. There's also the porch entryway, which takes you up to the second floor, which is the picture on your right-hand side. And there's a dining room, a kitchen, three bedrooms, and two bathrooms. Here's a view of the project site looking north. This is the current existing conditions of the site. Here's a, a view of the rear yard looking north. This is the proposed location of the second unit, along with the garages and ADUs. And here's a close-up of the elevations. Some of the architectural features that they're proposing is decorative trim around the windows, stone veneer to wrap around certain parts of the, of the units, tile, Spanish tile roofing, nice stucco that will match both the existing unit as well as the proposed second unit to be consistent, rectangular gable vents, and also decorative entry lights near the entrances. And with that, staff recommend, recommended action is to approve Development Review Application 21002. And this concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from any board members? No questions.
No questions.
Um, I actually have one question. The Spanish tile roofing, is that going to be required on the front unit so that it keeps consistency with the front unit?
Yes. So they are proposing to refurbish the existing unit so that all the, all the units are consistent with color and decorative tile and as well as the roofing.
Perfect, sounds good. Can we get a motion to approve Development Review Application Number 21002?
Uh, this is Wiesenberger.
Go ahead, sir.
This is, this is Wiesenberger. I make a motion to approve DRA Number 21002.
And I will second that, Commissioner Bautista. Can we get a roll call, please?
Board Member Abrego?
Yeah.
Board Member Bautista?
Yes.
Board Member Wiesenberger?
Yes.
Board Vice Chair Gutierrez?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So it looks like we don't have any reports. We want the comments. Any comments from any board members? Nothing from Abrego. Okay. Any comments from staff?
Nothing from staff.
Okay. So it looks like this will conclude the meeting. I will adjourn this meeting to our next meeting on March 9th, 2021 at 6:00 PM.
Okay, this is Board Chair Wiesenberger. I'd like to call to order the Paramount Economic Development Board, February 9th, 2021. Roll call, please.
Board Member Abrego?
Here.
Board Member Gutierrez?
Present.
Board Vice Chair Bautista?
Here.
Board Chair Wiesenberger?
Here.
Okay, let's move to item number one, approval of minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes, please?
Uh, this is Board Member Gutierrez. Uh, this is Board Member Gutierrez. Go ahead, Bautista.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
And this is Board Member Gutierrez. I'll go ahead and second that.
Thank you, gentlemen. Roll call, please.
Board Member Abrego?
Yeah.
Board Member Gutierrez?
Yes.
Board Vice Chair Bautista?
Yes.
Board Chair Weisenberger?
Yes.
Okay, we move to public comments tonight.
No, no public comments.
Okay, and it doesn't look like there's any new business. Let's move to item number two, oral report.
Uh, yes, John King will walk you through this.
Thank you, John, and thank you, Board Chair Weisenberger and Board Members. This is really a recap of recap. John Carver gave this presentation to the City Council, so I'm just happy to have us all on the same page with what we did last year. So as you know, Planning Department, the Planning Department is made up of the Planning Division of the Planning Department and Building and Safety, the Building and Safety Division. We had this, you know, these unprecedented times, but we came through it. Construction and development, particularly housing, is considered critical infrastructure, and that's by order of the federal government last year, their determination. So we had to, we had to keep going, so we've persevered with, as usual, a high level of service. We made some adjustments with new safety protocols, give some examples. So inspections continue. Even at the peak of the, peak months of the pandemic, inspectors were going out. They made sure that only one, if it's a residence, only one family member would be kind of giving them a tour of the, what needed to be inspected, one person at a time, and everyone had to wear a mask and go through all the, all the safety and health requirements. The next slide is a summary. So on the Planning Division side, there was another, really was another busy year regardless of pandemics, 56 administrative actions, 22 conditional use permits. Yeah, so we had a healthy slate. To summarize Building and Safety, there was still large numbers, 399 permits issued, 7,158 inspections performed, and the council adopted an update to the, to the building code. So we're up to date with the code, and I'm sure you know our Building and Safety staff, they're certified, they have, they have to keep up with training, and, you know, they really are the best, the best in the business. So going through some, some highlights for the, for the project, Orange Avenue, 11 homes were created, so we're talking about housing. So this is a quality development. There were two lots, property owner, somebody came in and bought those two properties. One had previously had a house, it was vacant. The other had a house that the, this developer demolished, so where two older homes became this 11-unit quality development, and you could see in the, in the back, they had a little tot lot and a barbecue area, so high quality of life there. We're talking about ADUs, so again, 15 permits were issued last year, last calendar year, and of those, three completed, 12 are under construction. We have an example of one there. You can see the before and after. The garage door is gone, it's framed and stuckoed and just blends right in, there's a window, and there's a little glimpse of what it looked, what the kitchen looks like, so really nice. On Somerset, there was an unfortunate fire, so you can see ABC 7, there was a, there was a big fire, and fortunately, well, fortunately, the fire department is really close, the station, but the homes to the north, homes to the rear, were not harmed. And with that, the, the property owner and, well, the city really pushed for some, some upgrades, got a nice new landscape area in the, in the front and contemporary design. Then we're talking to Rio Luna, so this is a, it's a big one. We're really proud of this homegrown business that they, they took off. They're very social media savvy, as you know, and they make good food, bake goods. They were at Downey and Alondra, but they graduated to this new location on Paramount Boulevard. See some old pictures, 2010, it was the bank, back then it was called, you know, Banco Popular, and it was a dance studio, and the unfortunate thing is, back to the COVID-19, they opened in February, so not the best timing, but they weathered the storm and they're, they're here to stay. Home Improvement Program, so this is, we've been doing this since the eighties, 1980s, helping homeowners who qualify based on income to help them fix up, fix up the outside of their homes, primarily the outside, also some health and safety improvements. So we use federal home funds, comes from HUD, the Department of Housing and Urban Development. We had projects completed on Chester, Georgia, Perilla, Walnut, so really throughout the city, and we have three now in pre-construction phase. That means they're about ready to go, maybe they're out to bid and the bidding process, and there's three applications under review. And then there's an example of, one of them though was completed, you can see the roofing was changed. The top photo is the before, the bottom the after, new roof, new paint, new windows, the new door gate, screen door, light fixture, so gives, helps, helps out with the neighborhood. We find these, we always say this, projects are contagious, other neighbors, they want to kind of keep up. The next slide is a commercial rehabilitation program, a project that was completed at 13913 Paramount Boulevard over the year, and this was a long time, we, through years, we had approached the owner, who declined to participate in this program for whatever reason, while finally his, his children carried it through. So that colored TV, and you know, there was some old advertising, RCA, some companies are not even in business or not in the same form, Zenith, so now they're getting ready to lease this great new building. We did some work on ordinances, you worked on those, art ordinance, so now we have, we're more better positioned to get murals and indoor recreation and some updates on signage. And also, we worked on a, oh, this is huge with the, with the city attorney, the food truck ordinance, and then parking lot sweeping ordinance. So thanks to your work on the art ordinance, have an example, we now have this program, we're calling it Paramount Paints, and you remember, you reviewed this, so this is done at 6529 Somerset. You asked for some history, to some, some hay to tie into Paramount's history, and she did a good job, her name's Miranda. The property owner, he's, he's super happy, so I saw him not too long ago, and he gave the artist one of his t-shirts, so yeah, so they're all, they're all on good terms, and it's a win-win-win. The next slide is going with that theme of art, Paramount Paints, so we've been doing this for years, painting utility boxes, and so we had a nice roster of artists this year. Just left to right, Mary Young at, by in front of Doubles, Tracy Negrete at Garfield, and Alondra across from McDonald's, Charlotte Medina painted one at Lakewood and Somerset in front of Sky Burgers, and Miriam Bricio painted this one in front of RC's Barber Shop just south of City Hall. The next slide shows the 10 new single-family homes that are coming soon, they're, they're in the plan check process, so before long, there's one house that will be demolished, and this will all be tied in together and get, get these underway. We, unfortunately, we lost a restaurant tenant, the Pizza Press, I know a lot of us really enjoy dining there, but we are, you know, the bright side is, I have a new tenant coming in, the City Council approved this development that requires City Council approval, and they liked the idea of smoke-and-fire social eatery. Smoke-and-fire social eatery, they're, they're in La Habra.
La Habra?
And, and they, also, another company that they're, they're really savvy with social media, and they said they, they will be open in March, so, so it should be coming really soon. It says here they'll provide 50 to 60 local jobs. And then upcoming, plans are approved for the Tiramia Coffee Project at Downey and Rosecrans, just south of Rosecrans, so that's, that's an exciting one. We like our coffee, it's right by Starbucks. And some, another, some more, the larger planning, neighborhood planning efforts, you reviewed this maybe October, November, the North Paramount Gateway specific plan, it's gonna bring more sustainability and a plan for, for the businesses, the business corridor along Paramount Boulevard, and keeping the neighborhood nice, nice and attractive and affordable as far as the residences. And then we talked about the housing element, environmental justice element, we're also updating the safety element, and again, there's a link to the, the survey, and that's, you can get there from the city, again, the city webpage under the housing element webpage, which is under the Planning Division of the Planning Department. And we'll make that a little easy to get to on social media, and that's it. So recommend receiving file, and if you have any questions, we're all here to help answer them. And thanks for your help. We're all indebted to the Planning Commission and Development Review Board for their work on this.
Thank you, John. That was a good report. Um, do we have any comments from our?
No comments. No comments.
From our, any comments from staff?
No comments.
Okay, in that case, I'd like to adjourn the meeting of the Paramount Economic Development Board in our next meeting then, with the March 9, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Thank you.